We P M's will officially call this meeting to order. With that, we'll do just a super quick roll call of folks that are here at the table just starting at the end.
General.
District two. Carly Hoover, they then pronounce district one.
Superintendent.
Edna Morris, district four.
Hey Larson, district five.
And one day we'll all get that pronouns thing. We'll keep it, we'll keep trying, keep trying. Um, all right, and welcome to our guests, both online and in person. Always a pleasure to see faces here and folks that are invested in the work of the district as we all are. Um, so our quick welcome message shows some things that we, as a district, as a board, commit to doing as we engage in sometimes contentious conversation. So we agreed to stay engaged, to experience discomfort and be vulnerable, to speak your truth and to expect and accept non closure. And these are agreements borrowed from courageous conversations. And I'll take a moment to just acknowledge the land that we are on here today. So we in the Tukwila School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duamish and Muckleshoot people, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duamish and Muckleshoot tribe. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land, and we recognize the Duamish and Muckleshoot people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. And now we will stand for those who would like for our. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda just slightly and move item seven eight, which is the board discussion up to after public comment. So just before the reports, that way our guests can be here and then leave if you so choose or stay whatever, you know, you go someplace. Um, so I'll accept the motion.
Second.
Um, all in favor. So stands approved as amended. Um, so next item on our agenda is board recognition. I think we're going to take a picture. So not behind the tamer. I don't know what else is happening.
We'll take a picture and there are a couple of things. I've got, I've got some words to say, but we can assemble. So first of all, uh, I really appreciate the work that you all do being elected official. I've had this conversation with so many of you. Not an easy thing to do and from the student rep side to take the time out of your schedule to be here in the evenings. I appreciate both of our student reps, Mr. Fiofido and our Mr. Ryan, and so it is challenging work for sure. I appreciate how everybody though feels really invested, which is great. People really are passionate about this. They represent their community, their time. We do have, um, and I appreciate the work of each and every one of you and the opportunity I get to be with you, which I also appreciate. We have a couple of little guests that are out there. We have some certificates and there were two certificates that came from WASTA. So this is from their executive director, Tim Garchow, that says each year, WASTA, which is the State Directors Association, recognizes school directors for me reaching milestone years of service on their local school board. We appreciate the dedication of each school director and applaud their efforts on behalf of their students, staff and community. The two special additional certificates that came today actually just having the mail were for Director Morris and Director Bolljack for five years of service. So thank you very much. And behalf of the staff, parents, students, we really appreciate you. So thank you. And yeah, let's get a picture. Yeah.
All right. And for anyone out there listening who lives in director area three, and you want to get in on some of these amazing recognitions, the sharp candy and the amazing work that we do, join the board. There's an opening. Um, all right, anyway. We'll move to public comments. So there are a variety of different ways that one can offer public comment. If you're joining us virtually today, you can raise your hand in Zoom or just type your name in the chat and we'll see it there. And then for anyone in person would sign up on the public comment, which I am going to assume, okay? There is no public comments and there were also no written public comments received. So we'll give you just a second for anyone to find that raise hand function in Zoom, just in case. There will always be an opportunity at the end of the meeting for additional public comment as we're engaging in discussion, folks' input and questions is how we get better at our work. So certainly please offer that later if you're suffering. So with that, we will now move to the board discussion, which is the board director for at large process and timeline. So I'm assuming you've got some things to say, but I'll just also preface a little bit with, um, this is like the second time we've had a very broad conversation. I guess today we're getting maybe a little bit more of a focused conversation. Last time it was like, what might this look like if we did this? Is this even a possibility? And what we're talking about here, for those that don't know, is right now our board is structured by director, district area. So each of us, while we are voted in by the entire district, by everyone in Tukwila within our district boundaries, we technically represent a small neighborhood or subsection of Tukwila. So as you all know, since May of this year, we have been down one board director in district three. From what I understand, there has in the past and folks will know better, but um, there has been some challenges filling that role. Filling that role in the past and with, you know, we've kind of gone about our, our normal ways of really advertising beyond like going door to door. And we haven't, haven't gotten folks that live within the director boundaries, the open director boundaries that have shown interest. We've had a few others, but again, not within that realm. So the one of the things we were thinking about is what it might be like to maybe shift a little bit and think about, um, maybe a move towards an at large position. Likely not two, that feels like way too many for me, but perhaps one. And again, the intent, and I think this is for me, the, the hope for this discussion is will we meet the intent, the intended desire if we do that, which for me is to create more access and entry points for folks to join the board, particularly we're thinking, if I'm thinking about folks that are representative of our Tukwila school community. Cause if you look up here, we're not as much, right? And so how can we really get folks in and, and in a way that, yeah, so that's kind of the basis of this conversation. So what we have is, um, we just recently did our, like redrew our board boundaries based on the census. That was a required, uh, thing that we were supposed to do. So Dr. Henry went back with the company that did that initial redraw to kind of give us what we have today as some potential, um, boundaries for what a, a, a four person and then one at large would look like. So that's a little bit from my understanding of kind of how we got where we are right now to this discussion. Nothing is like decided like this is what we're going to do, but I think it's now is it does this make sense for us from a, you know, again, from an equity standpoint, also from a financial standpoint, because it's not a cheap endeavor. So anyway, with that.
Really good summary. Um, the, the other, a couple of pieces, other details in the summary. So this vacancy has been there since the end of April of 2022. So it's been quite some time. The typical process, which is outlined in the revised codes of Washington or RCW, is if a board member were to resign, the school district has roughly 90 days to fill that position. And we have gone down that road in the past for other positions and been able to find at least one candidate in some cases, two that may be interested. And in those cases, what would happen is they would apply, the board would interview the candidates, then make a selection. In the RCW, they also talked about if after 90 days, the board cannot decide on a candidate, it moves to the ESD, the local ESD to help fill that process. So we went through that process. We had some conversation with the ESD, knowing that we were redrawing these boundaries anyway. They gave us an extension that ended in July of 2022 to hopefully find something at the end of December of 2022, just last year, to see if maybe with the redrawn boundaries that might include somebody who might be interested because you shifted the boundaries a little bit. So we got to the end of 2022, uh, December of 2022, and we did not have any applicants in that particular area. There was a brief conversation, I think, also it was either in the late spring or summer about an at large possibility, like what that might be. The thought behind that was that we would want to wait until after we go through the boundary. We are kind of entering that phase of that. There is also a revised code of Washington, basically in state law that says for school districts, you can at maximum only have two at large members. So it's not like you could do all of your board directors at large. There is a requirement to at least have three directors. I think there are positives, pros and cons for having, having at large. And that's going to be part of that process for tonight, have that conversation. The process from here on out, I did include a kind of a cover letter memo to go along with this. If we, if the board were to consider doing an at large process and wanted to do that sooner rather than later, the at large moving from all represented districts to an at large requires a vote of the people, which means it has to go on to a ballot. There are only four times in the year now where ballots go out for the population to vote. It's February, April, August and November. There used to be more, but they've kind of narrowed down those number of months now. So it's four. In order to get, uh, an item on the ballot, a school district has to submit that in writing two months ahead of time. So for us, that would be by February 24th, in order to put that on for the April ballot measure. Um, and then there would be a process if, if approved, two weeks basically to certify the election and then you would re-advertise for whatever that thought would look like. That person then would serve until the next election and then, uh, which would be November and then have to run for that position. So it's kind of a quirky thing, but because it's, it's off the regular election cycle and it's new, then they would just have to run for that position. If we're looking for that newly created position, again, it would be an appointment until the November timeframe. So there are some challenges that are in there. And I, I would guess on an estimated timeline, like the earliest it could probably all fall into place would be June anyway. Probably the end of June. Uh, myself and Director Hoover are going to be having a conversation with the PhDs and VSD because obviously they've given us two extensions. So they're very curious about kind of where we are in the process and want to help support us. I'm not sure they, they have additional methods of finding people, but they have the same concerns that I think have come up mentioned by board members is that, you know, they would like to see a board that's representative of the community in which serves Tukwila. So, but we know with the five director districts, um, that result also has not necessarily changed the dynamic or complexion of the school board. So, that's, that's where it kind of sits. And then we invited some city council members. We have city council member earlier here tonight just to, I think, get the perspective from the city council because they do have at large members that might be able to talk a little bit about how that dynamic looks on the city council.
So with that, any thoughts, comments before we hear from councilman? Do you want to share? So like, I don't, uh, don't like at this moment like have like specific questions for you, but I think it's just, um, we want insight. You've obviously also been an incredibly active member in our community for a long time, been elected official for a long time. So it's kind of what perspective might you have to offer for us as we're thinking about this?
I was actually expecting questions. If you have any, it's fine. So it's clear what the intent of having districts is for. We are a very diverse city and ensure that there's, um, access to the school board that you have these districts, but it looks like you're having participation issues. If you've already done over your communications, when you meet, how you do recruiting and you feel that's where you're at, then, um, running for at large is harder. We have to communicate as a candidate to everybody in the city. So I did my opinion and you have to also stay neutral on how you feel from neighborhood to neighborhood. You're not thinking about just where you live, but everybody wants good food. In this case, all of the components to the school district. I like being a large candidate because I get to reach out and work with everybody from across the city and understand what their concerns are. And I think, you know, what we can't do alone, we can do together is something that's sadly one of my favorite organizations. And I believe that's strong and supportive. We'll think together about what's good for us and our future together. So I'm not quite sure what you're hoping to hear from me. You wear a lot more shoe leather. You spend a little more money giving information out to the voters. We feel that you need to communicate more broadly to everyone and you get a lot more input from across the city. And I'm, I'm just talking like anybody, even though I know it's a district. Doesn't everybody vote for everything?
Yes.
So, so.
Oh, does that?
Yeah. Yeah. So you still do campaigns. Why? Then, um, district, your responsibilities is just to represent your, your district specifically once you're on the board?
I don't, I don't think so. That's not the way I think of it because we're voting at that large. I mean, the purpose of the district is just to make sure that, you know, there's representatives from, in particular, in our case, we have three different elementary schools. Like the discussion has always been, if we went totally at large, you could get, you know, everybody from around, you know, one elementary. Yeah. Yeah. And so, and you don't want that. So, but I, I think everybody considers, you know, them representing the entire district.
Yeah. And I, that's interesting. I, I've never thought of the city council as any of you representing neighborhood. Do you come across that? No, no, I didn't even, I, I, I don't even think of that. So.
Cause y'all are all that large.
I do, I do in time when we're talking about.
I think y'all are all at large.
We're all.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And so I think probably all the time we do, I mean, I do count the neighborhoods ago. All right. Have we done, uh, grow changes up in Ryan's way? More towards homes and things that are like on interurban and considered more, you know, partly anything that, you know, now we've got the, you know, interurban hotel apartment complex. And so a lot of people don't think of the mall area as something that residents, you know, that concerns it other than it's a mall. So for us, we're constantly thinking about where people live and what impacts we're going to have on how they live and more importantly, how well are they being served compared to the rest of the city? So we'll talk about pay per point to areas, our streets are going to have great meaning. And if one area gets all the funding going into their area, we're going to start asking questions. Are we really doing everyone's approach of service?
One of the things I'm, I'm curious about in those, telling Dr. Hunter to, knowing that like it's a, it'd be cost for us, right? Put it on the ballot. It would be important for me to know that like it would pass because I would really hate for it to not. So I'm curious, like, if you have any kind of like pulse on, even just like thinking about the city council, like have there been conversations even around like the public perception of an at large position versus a districted position?
Not really because we've been at large for a good period of time. I'm, I'm listening because of change in politics for, for city councils across the state. Uh, there's a classic case that basically started the legislation on districting for cities and how you go about making that happen. And it was over a gap and we were having a very distinct racial exclusionary process going on. Basically, I had all Caucasian city council in a district that was greatly a minority majority. And then you know, closer struggles, it was mon- monetization issue. But once they registered, they were able to, um, get better representation from across their cities. Or I think better off, I believe in my heart, they're better off with that kind of access the way it is. But that can be gained as well. You're not having that problem right now, but that can be gained through appointments and it has to. There's other places that are struggling with that, but the intent is to try to get more diverse city council that's representative of the people who are paying the taxes. So no, I don't, I don't have, I'm more trying to listen in if someone feels like an underrepresented area. How do they feel about it? But nobody's been moved enough to push it yet. I would ask to pull out at some point now somebody take that up. And I think it would be a healthy step for us to at least consider as a citizenry. Whether or not it's a good tip or it's not. I know I ran specifically because there was no one from my area that was represented on the council. That's one of the main reasons. I have a few other important things that I thought needed to be done and supported. Starting with the board. Um, so that was, that's the area at the time of my got involved. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't throw the good apple of the bat. But I definitely wanted, I kind of looked around, I went like from our area. Are we having a voice then? So it's important that it's spread across. I'd be disappointed if we were at large, had the city to pull out there. Everybody was from, it just doesn't make sense. Candidates that have shown up have sort of spread themselves across the city automatically, or maybe that's just the way everybody kind of stirs up the candidates and gets them out there. Completely sharing the science behind all of that. Or we just portioned the people who want to spend a lot of time serving the public from all walks of life and all different points of pursuit.
Yeah, I think the, the dynamics of the school board is a little different from the city council in the sense, if you look at the history, most people run unopposed for school boards as opposed to in the city council, it tends to be more contested. I mean, I can't remember the first time somebody ran and it probably happened, but run unopposed. And so, so that says, and I'm, you know, what the reason for that is, I'm not quite sure. I mean, you guys get paid a salary. We do not. You know, that may have something to do with it. But so we, we're in a position where we need to do something to encourage more people to come in and, and one of the ways, yeah, I think would be good to just open up one position for at large because I, I mean, I still want to keep the, the distribution as much, but I also have one position at large. Cause I think that would likely solve our problem. You probably find somebody in the entire city to come in. Well, we know that actually a couple of people have applied that were not in district three, but they're interested. So we know pretty much sure that that would solve the, solve our, you know, needing one more.
So there's interest out there. We, we don't give a huge amount of money to.
Right.
Castle, but that is a difference. And some people sometimes feel like they're kind of the guy that they're paying. That's, that may be something the school board, they will look at in other ways. I, you know.
Well, that one you're driven by state law. So there are. Yeah, no.
Just saying.
Oh, different ways. Yeah.
Yeah. And you know, we're all starting to take, take a good look at ourselves for special racism cases. A lot of us have jobs, day jobs. This, I assume you all have something going on or retired or now that I control. Some way that you can make it to this meeting at this time. But I often wonder, you know, is Monday night for city council, the right thing is maybe we should be having these meetings on Saturday afternoon. And what are the laws that tell combineds or don't combine us? Obviously there's a lot of staff required for these meetings. So they're excited about showing up over the weekends, but not very much. Right?
Not doing that too.
Yeah. But also there are people out there that would be great for our parents in your school district that work two and three jobs. And they just simply don't have a family to get down with. But then the question is, uh, is there a certain kind of job? And maybe they'd be better off even during the day. And, and you know, people have to make adjustments. That would be people here are comfortable maybe because this works for you. But it might be a matter of just kind of looking at your patterns and seeing what would fit and, you know. Just what you just did a minute ago was you acknowledged a couple of people for being here for five years and took a picture. And maybe make a bigger deal out of it. Bigger deal as finishing here, whether they go to their second term, whatever it is. And we, we don't, but we don't have a problem with it. Used to be your PTAs and things that I'm using an old probably phrase, probably more to the acronym than I remember. Parent teachers associations, what this we call, were really, really active. And I don't know if that's, and that from those groups you usually end up with parents saying, yeah, you know what? I think I can do this more thing and do better for the school than I want to, you know, kind of do more for. Do you have that kind of organization and are they very active and are some of them coming out of there? We have a little bit.
In some of the schools, yeah.
So that, that'd be where I start the recruiting, but then again, if it's not very diverse, the people on the PTAs, you know, because they're already showing that they can spend a little time and do this.
Yeah, the one we have is the, the parent advisory committee and there's lots, that's a fairly relative diverse group. And I don't know if anybody's have any of those people applied? Not that I know. Okay. Yeah. So anyway, there, yeah, there are different parent groups.
And you know, I, I know you guys have an actual senior doctor, and I'm, I'm a little concerned for you that you have time when it's in things, but maybe it's time to just cast a broad survey out and say, hey, you know, have you ever thought about it? Maybe. I started out volunteering, uh, for people in the neighborhoods, actually for political organizations. I sort of fell into something. And the one lesson I learned was you try to find people, what they're interested in and then try to help them volunteer at what they're interested in doing. And people have lots of different things that they're interested in doing to make a difference in the whole. And so if you maybe tap into what is, what would it take? And then the other thing is depending on, I'm, I'm a little focused because I'm a female gender. For years they have, and even right now you can hear the comments whenever the majority, minority grows in our US Congress of women who are going into political office and down in Olympia for the state legislature. And, uh, you know, how many women mayors there are when groups, and I'm just going to go with that if that's where I'm at. They work hard to say, what would it take to get you to run and actually get together? They demystify was what it is to fund and what it is to run and what it's like and how to get a kitchen cabinet. And maybe that's another little piece that may help, not everything I just talked about. But demystify what it's like to be a school board member. Maybe have them, you know, kind of like to bring us, uh, kids at work day. Maybe it's a, bring some people to the school board meeting day and have them sit and go and show them what it's about. You know, and try to show them, I think, the positive aspects of involvement. It's really awkward being in where I'm from and trying to tell you what you should do.
No, it's just perspective. Yeah. One of the things that actually just, I mean, I'm super curious about. I mean, I, I think all those ideas are great. And then. Yeah, one of the things that actually just, I mean, I'm super curious about, I mean, I I think all those ideas are great, and then I also think about like. Great, who's gonna execute all of that? And so I wonder if. There would be any alignment that we could have even with the city. I mean, elections happen at similar times. How could we maybe even partner to, you know, muster interest into like essentially campaign together? Even just an awareness campaign of, these are the things that are.
That that would be, I mean, I've. Uh, to me, to me, I'd be able to find anything like that as an individual. I don't know how we could actually.
Do that.
Institutionally, right? On the other hand, we can help each other spread the word, we can carry each other's materials. You can. I'm trying to just kind of.
Endorsements, you know.
Yeah.
Firefighters in the process. We council have worked really well together.
Yeah. And just, you know. Just reaching, I had a thought. Again, it's hard to institutionalize it, but I think you'll find candidates that would be interested.
You guys continue to have this vision, it came up a little bit in the work session earlier. This vision of like creating this amazing pipe, and there are so many people that, I'm not one of them, but who were born here, grew up here. They go away for a minute and they come back. Like, there's something so special about that. And I envision this amazing pipeline, literally of. Preschool student or even infant. To mayor, right? Like, or representative or congressperson, right? That starts with like, how can we really align so many things to where maybe our student reps get opportunities here? And then maybe they run for a relevant position on the board, and then they're being really invested in by members of the city council that is like, great. You're doing this over here, let me teach you some of these things so that you can then step into the city council. And then it just becomes this amazing pipeline of people that are invested from our community, in our community. Anyway, that's a super pipe dream, maybe ten years from now.
You know, we have a council member that's on the board right now that came through, uh, teams for Dequella. I've got some experiences both from the school district and ourselves.
It was on our board.
Yeah, and then we've involved in them, you know, last night we had some people with small opinions kind of speak. And while they were here, I mean, some of them were students. One of them was amazed, she pointed out that she was, her hand was shaking. And she was just, you know, she had a lot of big emotions going on and and. But I I know before I got on the council, how daunting this is, standing at podium to speak. I'm not intimidated by you now because of the experience that I have, but I'm proud of you. Before I ran the election for the title, I'm here, this will be a little spirit. And they're just at a table that's at the same level, you know, some big digest or thing. So helping people feel comfortable coming forward. Just what you're doing right now, I'm not here presenting, I'm not being, you know, put on any major pressure. Uh, to answer hard questions, uh, I'm here just sharing my experience back and forth with you. Maybe you can bring in some of your PTA leaders. And just have a dialogue just like this.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking. I don't think we've actually done, you know, like. One of us or a couple of us go down to the PK meetings and just talk about this and. Try to convince some people to run or go to the parent advisory committee, see, I mean. I think that would be kind of me an obvious first step.
I think people would be thrilled, to be honest. They might not, they might, you know, look at their schedules, oh my gosh, that's not the right time in my life, my kids are X, you know, and I'm all over the place driving them to soccer games or whatever. But I think a lot of people who volunteer, if someone looks at them and says, hey, you'd be great for the school board, they'd love to be asked. They they don't even know it till next. So that that gets a little energy going. Maybe it's, you know, could you help the board with? You know, we talk about the pipeline with one aspect of whatever the board is working on. Do you have some committees like we have? No, we have some committees that are on transportation and and the budget, and so. We actually, you know, can invite people to come and squeeze. I remember my thought now, it's a possibility to maybe work with the mayor, you've got a lot of people volunteering on our board's admissions. Those are people who were asked and were appointed, and council proves that most often it goes well. And so they've already had a sense of like a little bit of promise rules, they're used to working on teams. And if they're, you know, if some of those are parents. You know, you might want to tap into that, so maybe have you ever thought about being on the school? That's something that would be great and wonderful, parks commission. So who would you think about?
Yeah, that's interesting, because I asked Cynthia, Dela Rosa, Delo. Yes. If she would be interested in running for school board, she goes, I didn't know I could.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's, you talked about demystifying, I think there's a huge. Lack, void of knowledge about what this job is and what it's about. So simply doing that, just getting out in front of people and saying that.
Yeah, we just have a, have a meeting, this is a school board meeting, this, the school board's coming together for a town hall. And you're trying to set it up out of school. That's the thing, even on council, what I learned, when we were talking about the townhouses that are going to go in over by the church. Yeah, we'd have, meet at the the community center and nobody, nobody can make it down, it's time to stay out. But this was a. A separate consulting company that was concerned, and we said, hey, that talked to our neighborhood first. I think we did pretty well. We got it over at Cast Kview Elementary. I think we were in the gym or. Or the cafeteria, and a lot of people showed up, or weasels and things like that, it's like, you know. You can do that, and it's extra effort on any topic. And then while you're there, say, hey, we've thought about being on school board, here's a sheet, sign up and and. We'll circle back and talk to you about that as well. And I think they'd be glad to be here. You know, because they want to show up there, actually care about what's going on with the school or board.
So I think then the question maybe that comes is, you know, do we? Do we collectively decide to maybe employ some new strategies? Maybe you, yeah, or or do we move forward with this potential at-large position or both?
Yeah, I'm not twenty eight thousand dollars, I'm not terribly excited given the current financial position. So, and I don't, I'm not convinced that we've really tried that hard, so I I would be in favor of. You know, doing a little outreach first.
I know, I know, it was it back.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, I know when I saw that price tag, I had the same thought. My initial reaction is like, we're in a financial crisis. Why, why could we, how can we justify spending money on that? Especially after confirming where it would likely come out of, which would just be the general funds, right? Which just feels really irresponsible to me. But also, it doesn't particularly feel super great to continue to not have a fifth person either, you know, because there. There's definitely an impact to that, but now the price tag really threw me for a. What would? I mean.
I don't know, sure.
It's not, I guess, in the context of like our budget, for sure. But also, if we have a mindset of, oh, that's just, you know, a little bit, that's how we get into financial deficits. Like, oh, three hundred dollars here, three hundred dollars there, then twenty eight thousand dollars there in the field. Um, yeah, but, yeah.
And, I mean, for us, so April, August, so. Let's say, you know, we we made some effort to try and and reach out and then. If that didn't work, there's still August potentially.
Yeah, I don't, at that point, that person would then be appointed. Through the next cycle because they wouldn't be able to register. Yeah, they wouldn't be able to register for the November ballot.
Uh, but if nobody else signed up for the November.
It's just when you have to reg, so you have the registration in May, and then you have us, you have a second shot.
Yeah.
In August.
Yeah, okay.
So you wouldn't know until. Whatever, end of August after the certification, but. There's not a, there's not another window to sign up for.
I guess I I just feel like we haven't.
Which is fine.
Yeah, I didn't feel like we have five very hard, to be honest. And so, take a little time to. Give it a run. And what do we, do we have, we have PTA at North Temple Elementary. We have. At the other two?
So which? Which elementary is most? Why are we missing four? Neither one of them, it's both of them. It's there's a high show off there and foster, so basically. But it's this way.
So it's born like.
Actually.
It's born like Panta?
Yeah.
No, just a tree is closely to Cast Kview.
Cast Kview.
Yeah.
Do they have an active PTA?
I don't believe so.
See.
PTA.
Well, of course, yeah, and then. Foster, I don't know.
So it sounds like we need to strategize around this, so I wonder if there are folks that maybe had the. With the interest and the capacity to be able to kind of come together, probably with some folks from the team and come up with some. Like a plan.
I can work with director more soon.
Yeah.
I mean, where the pool guts have a lot of kids coming through there, you might want to pop the vision there. And see if they might.
No, if one of our employees, I think, still the board, the board is full, so.
All right, well, thank you all very much, Councilmember Fuller, thank you for being here, appreciate your insight. Um, okay. So we've got our next steps on that. We're going to move forward with some different strategies, kind of to really engage PTOs, PTAs. Parent Advisory Group, maybe even some other strategies. And then we'll revisit, if needed, the at-large conversation. July-ish. Okay, great, so we'll move now to our.
Actually, it's supposed to be June.
June-ish.
Yeah, okay.
June.
Mayish.
May.
We'll get it. I'm just thinking if it's got to be two months ahead of time, it's just got to go on in June, so.
That's why we have a second tracking sheet, we'll end up on there, yeah. Okay, now to our four reports, and we'll start today with the student president.
So. We just had a meeting for the uniform, the referral, discipline reform form. Um, we kind of worked it, it matters. And there were a lot of people who attended.
For the which, sorry?
Uh, discipline data.
Discipline data, okay.
So it's like, we're, they're making a form where like. Teachers can fill out for students, you know, we're disciplined data, so just have some data on that. And that data is going to be put. Entered into Skyward, Skyward system, so we have to keep on that. Um, it was a very robust conversation. A lot of people had a lot of thoughts. And people were very, being very. Mindful about our, you know, because we're preaching about assist practices and some people were very. Mindful about the words that we use on the form, and there was a lot of discussion. Then that conversation has gone to be continued, but it's something that's in the work and, you know. Made a lot of progress so far. And then. The recent equity, recent equity team at Foster High School, what kind of interregional process? Because we lost, you know, the person before that was like leaving it. But we're revamping it now, where we want to have a more student-focused, student-focused. So right now it's in the process of rebuilding. And kind of what are the foundations of the team, what do we want to achieve? So it's a small team right now, but after we have the foundations down. So we're going to open it up more to all the students and staff members to involve, but it's changing the way that. We want a lot more students to involve us and both could at the moment. Year ago, where there was only staff that attended the meeting.
Any questions? And then it is Sam by chance here. Okay, great, then now to Dr. Huron, Superintendent Ford.
All right, thank you. A couple of these are. Items that were mentioned previously or. In the board work session, so one was the. Last week, attending the culminated assembly for the weekly solidarity at Showalter Middle School, I bet they did a really good job. Students did a good job in talking to Mr. Christopher afterwards. He said that that was their first all-school assembly since COVID. So it had been a long time, there are a lot of those students who hadn't been to an all-school assembly. There are a couple of things that, you know, we continue to look at the sound system and there's not a crate that you knew about. They tried a portable speaker, that didn't work either, and this was not because the students were being too loud. It's just kind of what that is currently there, so. We do have a contract with. Kind of a school acoustics company to come in, they're putting in a favor for that. To give us an idea about what the cost of that might be.
Is that different from, you know, AT, we used to use AT productions up in the past, because it's a different company?
I'll have to check and see what that move is, I don't know offhand. So that was great. I went to the Clue, the play on Friday as well. And as Director Larson had mentioned during the work session when Foster was giving their school improvement plan. I thought the students did just a spectacular job. The acting was great, the set was great, all of it worked really well. I had gone by a little bit earlier in the week and saw. Some of the rehearsals, so it's kind of neat to see it actually in production, but all of it was pretty good. They even had a little. Set mishap on there, but they just rolled right on through that, so they took it all in stride and I thought the students did an excellent job, so. That was really great to see, and I love the fact that we have an advisor who seems to be really into it, obviously giving a lot of guidance. But there's also quite a bit of talent, acting talent in our students, which is great, so it's good to see them involved in a lot of extracurricular activities. I had on here, I didn't know where we're going to go with our conversations about the board at large, but myself and. Director Hoover will be having a conversation with. The Puget Sound ESD, also around the board vacancy, they really want to help as much as possible, that's part of their role. I believe that's scheduled for the second week of February, so after that, we'll probably get some additional guidance. I think everything we talked about tonight and some of the strategies, myself, Dr. Morris, Director Morris, will get. All the information that we talked about and then hopefully to be deploying at least some of those before that meeting, so we can quite have know. These are our next steps that we've been taking. So forward to that. And then for racing equity. We are looking at a conference, and it's one of the books that I've. Sent to each of the racing equity teams as well as the board directors, that's the culturally responsive school leadership. The CRS L. That one's coming in around mid-May, so we gauged interest from racing equity teams and building principals. Puget Sound ESD is willing to help us out with some travel costs for at least some of those folks. And Dr. Khalifa, who is the person who runs that, is also waiving. Registration fees for some of the people as well, so then we're, we wanted to gauge interest, see how many other people wanted to go. We have more than four, which the PSC SD said they're willing to pay for, so we're going to see. What the total cost would be and people who can commit to that. That's coming up in May. Culturally responsive school leadership. It's not, it's actually in Detroit, Michigan.
Ooh, very true.
Yeah. So more information about that, kind of the, how many teams are going, and the thought behind that, we had that conversation. In the racing equity, district racing equity meeting last time. And in talking to Dr. Khalifa and Puget Sound ESD, the thought was to have at least one racing equity lead and the principal from the same team to go together to really help. As kind of a team, going as a team effort, so that's, we wanted to make sure we had both, at least two of the people from the same school going. So that's what I have for Superintendent Ford.
Any questions? Great, so now the health updates.
I don't think Ms. Maestro's on there, but she did send me some information. So she had said, there has been an uptick in COVID cases. So she had said, uh, there has been an uptick in COVID cases over the last few weeks, but it seems to be slowing down now. The health team is in process of completing vision and hearing screening. So guardians should expect to see referrals if they are needed. Uh, there's also a change to the H P V vaccine guidelines. So this vaccine will now be offered at age nine instead of eleven and twelve. And there's a D O H letter that will be sent once the changes have been made to the immunization record system. That's W A I I S. I do not know all of the letters for that particular acronym. Um, but those are some of the main things um that we have there. Yes, we're hoping that, you know. Our cases and any other sicknesses are kind of going down. Hopefully we're getting to the tail end of any flu season. That's also not totally related because both all of those things are happening at one time. Um, but yeah, it's definitely those things have been impactful. Along with other reasons why we have some absences and mean for substitutes. So it's really kind of impacting a lot of the buildings.
Yeah, that was gonna kind of be my next question, my next question, knowing that we're already navigating some staff absences. How this is further. Obviously, we haven't seen anything come up to the point where we're needing to. Close or, you know, do anything like that. So we've always been able to fill classes to some degree.
With varying levels of success and it kind of depends on the day. So again, we have a really high number of long term uh leaves. And so that really kind of stresses the substitute tool because we're using them to help fill into the long term leaves. We talked a little bit today in our cabinet meeting about some other possible solutions, so we're going to continue to explore that. See if there's something that might be able to help us. Um, my guess, you know, we're not the only, obviously not the only district feeling that impact. I think. Sub shortages are just a reality of most places and a lot of our surrounding districts are also facing many of the same things, you know, uptake of. COVID and flu. I haven't heard about anything bubbling up to that level as well.
It was a school, an elementary school that closed. I wish I could remember which one it was today. Yeah.
I didn't see that.
It was on the news this morning due to our COVID outbreak.
What are we doing about staff absences and then like what are we doing about student learning as you know, staff uh absences? Students are losing a lot of learning, especially in those higher level advanced classes. So what we.
Yeah, we try and fill those positions as soon as we know about them. So especially for long term absences or long term leads. Um, those are just, we're getting hit by a couple of those, just I think some people. Um, have some life circumstances in which they're taking those cases and we really try and fill those as quickly as we can as we. Uh, talked about also during the. Kind of the foster presentation on the plan. I mean, we also want to have someone who can really do the job well in those positions. But in many cases, we also just, we need to have somebody in that classroom and then try and hopefully parent get some support to go along with that. The longer term leaves also kind of end at different periods. So sometimes it could be that they're out in the fall and then they're coming back in the spring. So in some cases, some of those classrooms may have their full time teachers back again. Um, but it really does vary, kind of. Stretches as much as possible, but as soon as we know about it, our human resources department knows, obviously, because those leave requests come to them. As soon as we find out about that, they work with the principals on, you know, obviously those principals know too. And then we try to identify these all. So a variety of ways in which they do that. Um, we know some people who do long term subs or have some for us in the past. Sometimes we reach out and try and connect with people who are retired. So we do retire staff who may be still close by and interested. In something that's kind of short term, but not just like a data basis, like. They might say, oh, this is good. You know, I can be a long term sub for a month. That's good for me and works for my schedule. I'm retired, so that's good. I just don't want to teach full time for the whole year again. So we do try and reach out to people like that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, it's an interesting question, getting back to like how we ensuring that like student learning is not interrupted. I mean, the reality is, is it's going to be to some degree, um but then thinking about like the impact of having a long term sub. And um and I'm going to be very clear. I don't have any concept of what that's like. I've used that before. So like I, I just want to be, I want to name that out loud. Um, but my, my guess is that there has to be an impact there. Um, and I wonder too like what. Like training or supports and even accountability levels there are for substitutes who are in place. You know, one of the things I've heard particularly from students at Foster recently is the lack of like rigor um and accountability for assignments. So like, how are we ensuring that even if that main teacher is out, that the substitute is. Really still doing what they can to hold themselves accountable and their students accountable for whatever's, you know, the, the. Lessons that were supposed to happen, the assignments that we do, stuff like that. To me, that feels like how we make sure that the learning continues, right? Even if people are out, what are the mechanisms that are in place, whether that's district support, district accountability or train, whatever that is. That will actually help eliminate the gap that may happen, right? Because I think again, it's unrealistic to say there won't be any disruption in learning, but how do we really get intentional minimizing that with some, some specific things in place?
I think we can put something together that explains all the steps we need to support those folks. So we'll do that.
Okay, any other thoughts, questions? Okay, Director Reports. Anyone want to go first? Okay, go for it.
So I'll start with um some, some good news on a couple of fronts. One is. Uh, so there's a report in Seattle Times in December thirty. There was, the, the report was on discipline in schools. And particularly as it relates to students experiencing homelessness and. Um, I think our communication director had phoned for that. You know, in, in our district, the discipline rate for students experiencing homelessness is about three percent compared to ten percent for the state. So we're doing a really good job of um. Not, you know, sending those students out of schools uh for any reason. Um, the other part of that I talked about in the work session and that is the, the graduation rate we have for. Uh, students experiencing homelessness is, is one of the best in the state. I mean, it's literally. Again, it's, it's number ten of one hundred twenty five districts in the state. So I think that's um. It says a lot about, uh, and this is not, you know, this has been going on for a while. We've been done doing really well with this. So the staff and the, and the quality engagement folks that support uh those students and their families and. But it's also, I think, recognition they're in a community that um really cares about this, starting with um Stillwater. That, you know, provides um food for the students um over the weekends. Uh, to the care nights or coal or clothes to. I know we have uh agreements with local dental and vision uh providers to talk about dental needs and vision needs. And, and of course, um Director Boladex uh work um in um. Providing housing, tiny housing, um encampments and all that. So. Um, anyway, I said that I think that says a lot about our uh community and is worth um celebrating. Let's see, okay. Um, so I attended, I'm on the West uh, the School Director Association Legislative Committee. And um, we had a two day meeting back at the beginning of this month and I gave a presentation on. That I've given pieces of it here on equity and funding. So a funding system that actually. Produce puts money where the highest need students are, rather than our current system, which kind of does the opposite of that. And so um, it was, it was, it was uh well received. Um, it's, it's one of those things that I think it was kind of news to a lot of people. People didn't really realize that. And so it's going to take some time to sink in. This is one of my multi-year projects and. Uh, but it, it raised some awareness and um pursuing a few little contacts to try and push it. In the legislature, one of the things that preventing it from moving in the legislature is there's really no legislative champion of it. But we identified a representative from up in Stonewash County, April, where who. Has expressed interest in this whole subject area. So we're going to try and get in touch with her and see if we can start uh moving some issues on that. Um, the next one, yeah, maybe you can put up. This is kind of a, a different uh subject area. Um, if you've been watching the news recently, there's been a huge wave of um information about this. Uh, software product called Chat, Chat G B T, which is a chatbot uh program, artificial intelligence program. That, you know, anybody can use and you can just type in questions and it will give you some really very sophisticated answers. I'm not going to read this all, but I did, for example, I just put one up here, you know, um. Organized Max My Street, that comes to a lot of them students. And if you read that, there's another on the next page. Um, there's one about E O L students. And this is stuff that, you know, it's, it's, it's pulling from entire, from the web. Um, and it's got some really um. The advancement in how far this has come in artificial intelligence is uh really getting interesting. It, it brings up some challenges for school systems because among the things that you could put in here was, you know, write a five hundred word page. Uh, you know, uh, uh, paper on whatever you want. And it will do that. And so um, you know, this, there's always been some of that around and, you know, it's, it'll be interesting. To see um, you know, teachers have had that challenge before and you can kind of. You know, it's interesting how the public schools has banned this particular product on devices in Seattle. Which I'm not sure that's really the right way. I mean, this is the technology that's coming. You know, we're going to have to kind of figure out how to use it because if you fight it, prohibition doesn't really work very well. So um, anyway, it's a really interesting um, um, product that we're going to have to figure out. It's, it's potential, has the potential to kind of replace Google and search. Google's getting pretty nervous about this. Microsoft is investing in this massively. Because, you know, you can get, you know, rather than just links to things, you can get the actual sophisticated answer to whatever it is you're looking for. And so it can be on that one hand, a great research tool. On the other hand. It can be abused as well as most schools are. You can use them both ways. So this is going to be an interesting, I think, challenge for us. This version, particular version they have right now, it's pretty sophisticated. They're planning kind of another version shortly. They're saving it to be more sophisticated. So I mean, as the school system in general, we're going to have to figure out how to, how to, how to use, uh, work with this thing. I don't know, Dennis, our, our students.
Yeah.
I'm sure students are well aware.
A lot of like, it's our, the, at a cost level about pictures on using this.
Right. Right, yeah. So, you know, it's, it's not that, I mean, if, if a teacher sees how students are written in the past. And all of a sudden sees something really, it's not that hard to figure out that they're using it. But um, anyway, it's like I say, it can be a great, a really great um uh research tool as well. Yeah. Um, the other side of artificial intelligence, because it's becoming interesting, is there's a program. Which is, I think, can provide a good uh uh solution for some of our issues. It's called text analytics. And, you know, so one of the things that um we have in our, in our surveys from the C E E. Which is C E E as our survey that we do staff, students and, and uh parents. And it's basically a, a one to five scale. So you put a statement and you're ready to run the file. There are some things like we know when we were looking at it, the answer, for instance, one of the questions that come up. Do you think our students can achieve, you know, state standards, something like that? And we saw, you know, about fifty percent of our, our staff thought that was not true. Um, so then the, but then the, the obvious question is, well, why? And so, and the, and the C E E that doesn't really help us with that one. And so if, for example, we were to include, you know, the test, you know, a, a question on the next C D and screen. It says, well, please explain your answer and open up pre-form text. There are now tools, I know, because some, I know somebody who works at one of those companies that has these tools that. And then take all that text and do kind of an artificial analysis of it and pull out, you know, the key points from all those texts. And the issue with, of course, when you open up, I talked to, I think, Jeff and Shelby about this. And Shelby, this was our data analyst. She's had some, done some experience with analyzing text, you know. First of all, if you get very much text, it's very cumbersome. It takes a long time to do it. And second of all, whoever analyzing, of course, has a bias. And so then you introduce their bias. And so the advantage of these A I tools, the text analytics tools is number one, they don't have a bias. Well, I shouldn't say that. There's, it's a big subject in that field about is there bias in there? So they're looking for that kind of stuff. So it's, 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 it's one thing to look for, but the other thing is that it, it loves more data. The more data you give it, the better it, better it operates, which is kind of the opposite of the, you know, the way humans work. So anyway, there's, this whole field has been really interesting and, and I've been kind of communicating with um C D. Uh, John Stich is the president of there. Still waiting for kind of a response back whether. Uh, it would be interesting for me to, to have a question on our next survey that's open and and just. Use this tool and see what happens, see what comes out of it, see if it makes sense. Hopefully we could get maybe C E to be interested in doing that as a co-research project so they would pay for it. But anyway, uh, so anyway, the field of A I is getting really interesting. It's been developing for many years. And, and it's now coming home to, I think, Oregon to deal with it. Um, let's see, the next thing was, oh, yeah, so February twenty seventh, Monday, mentioned this to Dennis already. We're having the, the day on the hill in Olympia. This is where um. School board members, superintendents, um, students from around the state come down to Olympia for that day and talk to legislators. So anybody who's interested in uh doing that, uh Dennis has said he's interested in going. I don't know, Dr. Heron, are you planning to go on that one?
Uh, and it's on my calendar.
Okay, I, the only reason I ask you that, I, I want to sign up. The, the process for getting um signed up for uh meetings with legislators is kind of be different this year. So uh, we need a little to the degree that we can, I could sign people up. I'm just signing up for some, you know, for. And, and anybody else who wants to come can come. It's a Monday, it's a Sunday, Monday thing. So if you come on Sunday, that's kind of the conference. And that's, there's a card for that. You come on Monday, anybody can come and we'll, you know, try and get in to see legislators and stuff. So as I mentioned to Dennis also, um, we can take more than one student potentially if we want. I'm not going to, in the past, I've tried to schedule this, but Waspin's going to be scheduling all the things with and. We have potential meeting with the, with the governor and with the county governor and Chris Raykall. So um, the exact times of those will emerge over time. So anyway. So if anybody, if there's another board member who's interesting coming, you can.
Is it this weekend?
No, it's February, February. It's a month from now, on, on a Monday. Yeah. So it's kind of all day on Mondays. You don't need to tell me right now, but like the next meeting. You can think about if you wanted, I can sign up for that. Um, all right, so if we go maybe to the next one, so I'm going to do kind of a quick, let's, legislature had started. And so uh in future meetings, we'll have a separate legislative report, but I'm just going to float it in here. Um, there's some really interesting um bills that are, are floating in this. The first one, there you see is a mandatory, mandatory elementary recess forty five minutes. So um, this would require school, this, this is under the category which the bills we all love called unfunded mandates. They will require, so just like so snow, this is, right now, we have fifty minutes of elementary recess at our schools and thirty minute lunch. So this would require adding thirty minutes of recess at each of our elementary schools. Which number one would require reopening bargaining, which adds cost to us to figure that one out. And number two, it says, well, if they're not going to extend the pay for more school day or more school year. And we got to take some thirty minutes out from something. So, you know, reading, math, science, whatever. So anyway, that, that one's out there. It's, it's, it has a lot of appeal in the sense of everybody can agree that students need more recess. But the question is one of those devils and the details. How do we do it? Um, let's see, the, the big bills, these next two, fourteen thirty six and fifty three, thirteen eleven are. There's definitely going to be some increase in specialized funding this year. I can say that with some certainty, which, because everybody's talking about it. And there's two bills already floating, one of them um. Would fund more than the other. Uh, it's, this would be phased in over four years. So um, how much money it, it will cover? So we have, for example, a one point five million dollar deficit in our special funding. And um fifty three thirty one, probably for fifty three eleven, as it sits now, would probably cover most of that. But it'd be over four years phased in. Um, the issue, um, it's interesting. Uh, with this one is um. Yeah, I guess it's, it's going to be, how much money does the legis, so the way the legislature works is. They pass their budget based on projections of how much revenue is going to come to the state. There's a, there's an independent third party that does this, where it's actually. There's a, there's an independent third party that does this, or it's actually state employees that do it, but. That says how much money they project revenue coming out over one, two, three, four years. And so, um, so far, uh, the state has been, there's these revenue projections have been coming in. Okay, we're gonna get more money than we expected, more money than we expected. That's gonna stop at some point, that may, the next revenue forecast is in March, it's a quarterly thing. Uh, so a lot of, I think, how special ed is gonna come out, how much we're gonna get is gonna be heavily dependent on that, on that revenue forecast. And so we'll have to kind of hold our breath and hope that comes in good, uh, and that we get, uh, but. They're definitely paying attention and I, I'm pretty sure there, there will be some hope coming on that front. Um, two twelve twenty eight is dual language program. So this, this will be good for us because as we, you know, try and. Crank up our dual language programs, provide more supports for doing that kind of stuff. Again, we'll see what the final bill comes out. Uh, the next one is school bus safety. This is another lovely unfunded mandate. They want to put. Um, outside cameras on all our buses, uh, to catch, you know, violators who are going by. I don't. Personally, I don't know, we have to ask our, our transportation director if. I'm under the impression, we probably don't have a lot of that going on in typical, you know, passing buses with red lights flashing, but I don't know that.
Yeah.
In theory, if, if it were the outside cameras, you'd catch them and you'd get some revenue from that, but I don't know, yeah, I know.
It's a very small.
Tiny amount of money, so.
There are some places who have already done that. Typically, they get. The ones I know of, at least, there is, you know, they got it through a grant because there's a company, just like the speed cameras, the red light cameras, it really does it. And so you get a very small amount.
Right. Yeah, and they get a cut and so on and so on. So, anyway, that one's floating around. Eventually, they do want to have. Uh, safety belts, uh, for everybody, but that would happen only as new buses are purchased. So. Uh, anyway, that's going on. Uh, the next bill talks about, this has been around for a long time, trying to improve transportation funding. Particularly for special education and the students that create all this, that's one. You know, I've been working on it for years and we'll see how that one, uh, comes out. I think they'll, they'll make some progress on that because they're actually getting. Serious about collecting real data, about what it really costs. Um, and then this next one is, is a, a big, uh, issue. It's, uh, school districts are fighting this like crazy. It's called prejudgment interest. It basically says that, uh, if, uh, there's something that happened in a school. Um, that gets decided in favor of the, uh, plaintiff. And it happened, you know, thirty years ago. Not only would we have to pay settlement, we'd have to pay the interest on that settlement over the last thirty years. That, what that will do, would do, would make our premiums, you know, we, we get our insurance premium from the risk pool. Which is already, I don't know, we're, we're already up to three, three hundred thousand dollars or something. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, so our premium for that would just. And when we think of, we had a couple settlements not that long ago, where they're forty years old. I mean, that would just, yeah, so. Districts are fighting that like crazy. Of course, who wants it? You know, big surprise that it turns. Um, and then this next one is interesting. This one came up, um, the, so. The amount of money that states can, or the districts can, um, raise locally is limited, is capped at twenty-five, about twenty-five hundred dollars per student. Seattle, because they have a lot of influential legislators, get a cap at three, thirty thousand. This is the bill that would actually raise the twenty-five hundred to three thousand over four years. So. This actually could, would benefit us, um, to the tune of about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year over the next four years. The, the kind of weird thing about this one is that it's, it's a kind of a backhanded attempt by the legislature to just push responsibility for funding. Uh, to the locals from the state, which is the, the cop out. So. I'm kind of, you know, i- it's nice, it would give us more money, but it's not really the way this should be doing. Anyway, that's it. If there's any questions or if, during the courts, if you hear legislative bills that come up, there's always things coming up. Just let me know and I'll, I'll research it.
I'm curious about, um, Senate Bill five two four three. It's an, uh, apparently an improvement to high school and beyond plan, um.
Okay, yeah. I think, trying to think what the discussion has been about that one. Uh, oh, one of, yeah, actually, that's interesting because. It would develop some software to keep track of that. And I think we just purchased some software.
We did last year.
So the, this bill, a, as I recall it. Passed OSPI with developing some software that everybody, and I haven't know whether it's may use or must use. If, if we've already had something going, I think this is one I kind of thought, well, you know, we're already doing that. And, but if it's gonna put another burden on us, then I'll watch it. Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, look at it.
Okay, just go to the line.
Sure. I might have an opportunity to speak with some principals from that conversation about positive things going on in their schools and. This is just one example of many that I heard was that. Our PE teachers, I think, some of our PE teachers in the elementary schools, well, if there's a, another specialist that is out. They will take two classes in their PE class to, uh, make certain that the staff has plenty. Which I think is remarkable to do that. Um, and those are just little ways that make such a big difference, but. That's, those are the kind of things that are so refreshing to hear. Um, and the CTE meeting was wonderful and the fact that. Those programs provide such opportunities for our students and. It's just rewarding to hear not only the, the accomplishments our students can. Achieve in these classes, but the accolades that they receive from outside. People about how respectful and how knowledgeable our students are from typical school district. It's really refreshing. I attended the environmental studies, um, event at the community center Saturday, um. Which was very well done, Dennis presented. Um, it was very interesting. Uh, the children, the students, excuse me, were very involved and, and very knowledgeable about their, their subject. Um, I also attended the clue performance. It was very well done and I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, so just a few, a few things on my phone, it's been forever since we've done reports, which with the months, holidays and things. Um, why did I write that? I don't know. Okay, um. I recently, uh, had the opportunity to meet with, um, someone, uh, at the Museum of Flight. Um, to discuss perhaps what a, a reunifying partnership might look like. Um, they've got some incredible educational programs that take place at Museum of Flight and they really want. Us to be recipients of those programs. Um, and so I, um, that was just something that I'd done. Last week, so I look forward to the opportunity to, to bring some folks in, um, and really figure out how we can leverage and strengthen that partnership. Um, because again, she is incredibly excited about the opportunity to work with us. And, and really wants to serve our students in a way, um, that really honors them. I'm so excited about that. Um, slightly not related to the board, but certainly comes back to it, um, and certainly that I've done, but something I'm about to do, I actually just joined. Um, or signed up to do, to participate in a white caucus for this year. Um, and I, I say that because, um, kind of thinking back, reflecting on some, uh, the race equity board training that. Um, the board has been, has been doing and, um, uh. Just, um, my continued, uh, commitment to, it just been under my own. Internalized race system and internalized superiority and, um, so really, really working to, to be in more spaces with. Um, white folks where I can really, really engage in those conversations and then hopefully, um, come back. Um, and that will translate into, to the work that we're doing in the district. Um. Uh, I, uh, as you all know, have been a part of the state teen inclusion task force, um, which has been, uh, meeting, um, every other week. Uh, for the last few months, um, and it's going fairly well so far. Um, I think we've got. As I knew what happened, the really quick timeline to do a lot of work. Um, so right now, we're just kind of in the, um. What are all the things that we need to do, um, and need to investigate? Um, and hopefully, I think this coming Thursday. Um, they'll start kind of discussion about what some listening sessions will look like to really think about, um, you know, how we're including everyone. Whatever it is, um, that the task force is gonna, uh, recommend. Um, and then, uh, I'm really excited about a project that I'm gonna. Be kicking off very soon, um, with Miss Core around, um, really creating a board handbook. Um, so I came on eleven months ago and there was very little, and by very little, I mean zero. Um, real orientation, um, and, and support, you know, beyond, of course, like. If you have questions, come to us with questions, right? So, which for me, as a new person, like. Being also new to the school district sphere, that was overwhelming in and of itself. And so it's taken me. Eleven months to feel like I've even like barely dipped my toe in. And so one of the things that I'm really hopeful to do is particularly as we're thinking about. Um, onboarding, you know, new board members in the near future, um. Uh, you know, really making sure that there's a strong foundation for folks to walk into and they feel supported, um, similar to, you know, what we were talking about here, right? Like how are we actually creating, um, something that's not mystified and something that's tangible and feels like. You know, people can really commit to the contribution that they're gonna, you know, the time committed and all those things. Um, so I'm excited about that project. Um, we haven't kicked up yet, uh, but gonna do that very soon. I wanted to kind of also put that out there as something that will be coming. Um, here, that will be, of course, getting lots, so much input around and community input is around, around as well. Um, yeah, that's kind of what I've been.
I'm tired of listening to all of you and what you're all up to. Um. I, I've been able to, uh, enjoy some of the music, music performances and play and basketball game. The first basketball game where I guess the pep band was there and it was really good. Mr. Maynard constantly had to pick up whatever instrument is not represented in his group. So he was playing the saxophone. I know he's a trumpet player, but he plays saxophone. He was doing a good job. Um, so I, I enjoyed most things. Um, but, you know, most of the time I've been working with the faculty workers or the principals or. You know, specific teachers, uh, especially the preschool teachers to make sure that our kids are fed and clothed and sheltered. So. Um, I have eleven kids living on my campus right now, good or schools. And today, when they came home from school, they were all riding their bikes and. Just about ran over me because they're just so excited getting home from school and. You know, they, they're Spanish speakers and my Spanish is about this big. So I, but I, you know, say, how is school, how is school? When they're all very excited. It's very good. It's very good. Do you have any homework? Oh, no. Yeah, okay. Um, so I. I enjoy seeing the effect of our schools are having on these new migrants and, uh, the third.
All right. Um, great. Well, that brings us to the consent agenda. So I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Um, I'm in favor.
Hi.
Um, it stands approved. Okay, um, now we'll move to our questions only presentations. Um, so I was always trying to go down the list. Um, any questions, additional questions about A A?
Yeah, um. So I'm curious about the, so we're right down to the bottom of the going here, in the ending countdown. So you, you said that there's a, a, a January adjustment. I assume, I hope that's a positive adjustment.
Yeah, that's when all of our, um, carryover, um, is allocated as well as the right sizing of what we budgeted in a moment. And what we actually did, and that's for CTE, B A and special education.
Do you have any, any clues? I mean, does it?
So.
Fund balance is gonna go approximately?
Uh, I do not want to. I will have a, but I will be able to give you an answer. Uh, the pushment should come out by Friday. So I will, my calculation and I can update you all.
I was curious, when you calculate the end, they come down, you said you're including. Esther dollars in the D nine, so the fund balance is how much kind of money we have.
On both sides, you have revenue and.
Oh, you're including it on both sides?
Correct.
Okay, so it kind of negates, because Esther does really shouldn't be in the fund balance, because we don't, we don't. Esther dollars are only used if we spend it. It's kind of used after, so we don't, you can't put Esther dollars in the.
No, it's not the full, it's what we plan to spend. For the year, but I can back that out and give you another end fund dollars. It's not.
Yeah, for the, it's, I mean, that's a whole separate, like a separate accounting system.
I mean. It's not like if we're not spending in that particular year. So by balancing out, you're, you're taking out, yeah, what you're projecting the spend. Yeah. It just lowers both sides.
But, but I can do that. I can.
Okay. Cause I think I just am more realistic, but it's not gonna change, I think, this number very much. Yeah, I guess, um. I don't know, we're gonna need to, um. Figure out, and I don't know, I mean, you have, I have a much better handle on this than I do, but. You know, this is gonna call for some significant, you know, reductions, particularly since I think the only thing that. Kind of pushes this is enrollment numbers. Um, I mean. You know, we did a collective bargaining agreement that locked us in on, but those are legal requirements. There's nothing we can do about that. So, uh, and given the fact that enrollment is continuing to go down. Um, the only thing left is, you know, in terms of, so to get things is to lay off people and downsides the organization. And that's basically what has to happen going forward. So, and I was looking at, um. The, some of the demographic, let's see, somewhere in here, did you mention, are we working with somebody else on, on demographics?
Correct.
Going forward, okay, yeah, so I looked at our last one, which was.
Twenty eighteen.
Two thousand seventeen, I think it was. And it's, um. It's, you know, it, of course, I was pre-COVID and it basically said, you know, by this year, you would have, you know, twenty-eight hundred students. And we have twenty-four hundred students or twenty-five hundred. So that was wrong, but then after that. It just has us going down future for the future. And, and I think. You know, it was primarily based on demographics or, I mean, on the birth rates and that kind of stuff, which. Um, is not gonna change. I was, I was hoping for a while that we would, you know, I'd see some uptick. Related to immigration coming back, because we've lost a lot when, when Trump administration basically shut down immigration. But it's not, um. First of all, it's not coming back as fast because of COVID and also because we live in an area that's getting more expensive to live. So. You know, new immigrants coming in are gonna have a tougher time. So it's just looking to me like, um, I don't know if you agree that. That there's gonna be significant downsides of this organization, just because, you know, that's where the enrollment. And I don't think, I don't, I don't really see, I mean, we can do, think about things to try and increase enrollment, but. Trying to be counter to that big trend, I think, is not gonna, is not gonna cut it. I think realism says. There's gonna have to be some significant downsizing and, you know, the extra dollars have kind of, um. You know, let us go for maybe another year, uh, but then there's gonna be. Drop offs and then, is that, is that, you kind of generally agree with that?
For the most part, I, you know, we never really wanna talk about, you know, the whole, from the first known.
Yeah.
I think it's more of right sizing.
Yes.
The staff.
Right.
The students, right?
Right.
Make sure we have a certain amount of students, we right size the staff that.
Correct.
Um, you know, equate to the funding model, which we know is not fair or equitable.
Right.
Um, the other piece of that again is that, you know, if we were to look at the salary schedule, you know, our, our staff. Are, are well compensated and then the flow through, uh, IPD is not, it's not, um.
Right.
So then with IPD looking at five point five or six percent, that's, that's not, um. That's what's floating out there, but that's just another additional hard hit. Especially since it's not really truly five point five or six percent that really represents the industry.
The other aspect of it is that, and you know, as far as salaries, we do need to be competitive. And as a matter of fact, our collective bargaining says we are, do need to be competitive. Relative to rent in Seattle, Highline and, uh, rent. And so, you know, I mean, we wanted to do that and, and keep that. So we're kind of, um. I think we're at, are we at the, do, do we know? Are we? I think we're at, are we at the, do you, do we know, are we at the high end of next year? Okay, I was reading in our contract, it says if we're at the high end, we we tend to, we can push it, pull it down to average? Am I reading that right?
I think there's, it it depends on how you're looking at that to go.
Yeah, it's where the average.
Yeah, there's, there's not contact like only should says we have to be at the top all the time.
Right, yeah, so, I think there are some things that are mentioned in the legislature that are are promising. I mean, if we, if we got to, you know, if we got a signature degrees in specialized funding, for example, but I think, looking at, when I look at this, that's gonna have to go to the fund balance for us. I mean, we're working to be significantly underwater and this, this kind of fund balance is gonna destroy our bond rate. If we, you know, end up this season or end up the year with this, which means, you know, the next time we go up for a bond, it's gonna cost significantly more. So, anyway, I just, I was for a few years, um, hoping that it started to start up, but I don't think that's gonna happen, and I think that's just planned for it to happen. So I'm looking forward to, yeah, and I, you know, need to keep, keep pounding at the state level to try and and get some more. But, you know, I think we're kind of to the point where, and I guess, anything that kind of wants to come out, there is a great spot where, you know, we have lots of S R dollars, but, you know, our, our general fund dollars, our B A dollars and our local levy dollars are basically dried up. And so I, we have some items on here for Google, but for spending, you know, it depends. If it's coming out of those, those pots that are dry, you know, I got us asked why, you know, I mean, it seems like we may need to be more disciplined about pushing this, and unfortunately, that that may mean cutting some things that we don't necessarily wanna cut. But, you know, that's, is that basically an accurate picture of how you're thinking about this?
For the most part, I know that, um, again, because I I'm the one that presents the fund balance, so I I know it's like one of those.
Yeah, right, right.
And so I am being very cautious, right? When purchases come through, making sure, again, the allocations are correct, sometimes people just do what they've been doing. Hey, not necessarily, you can shift it here.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, legally should, should say that, right? Allocated to a different part of money, basically just making the money work for you legitimately. So that we can utilize S R dollars, because another, another assumption is that S R can pay for anything, and that's not the case. You know, people actually come to me with great ideas and sometimes I may not know, and I literally email O S P I and say, hey, here's this idea, what do you think, can we use S R dollars? And they say, yes, there's my email that said, oh, it's connected, I can do this. And so I just, again, when we think outside the box, I ask those particular questions to try to see if we can maximize some S R funding. Again, you know, the assumption is you can use S R for any and everything in our fund service.
So I just wanna add again, I don't think we have to be passive about our enrollment draw. Uh, I know we've got an enrollment strategy coming forward and I can't wait for that. Um, but also there's, there's money from the bed, the state, the county, and cities are being encouraged to change their permits, their zoning, so that we can get more affordable housing. We can, we can lobby for that in Taquilla, so that folks don't have to keep moving out of the area. Um, we're not stuck with the way it is. We've, we've gotta get out there. I wish Kate was still here, because Kate hears, you know, a lot about this. And Kate has a lot of influence on helping to make affordable housing possible in Taquilla. So, um, don't forget to advocate for that, because, um, we've got land, we've got, we've got some spaces where we get affordable housing and branch up our enrollment. We just gotta pitch for it.
I completely agree with that. I just think from a financial perspective, you know, it's like, we could be very careful not to spend it before we see it, but I completely agree with, you know, advocating for it.
I'll also just mention that it's, uh, certainly our issues are a little more compounded too, because of our size. But this is obviously a challenge that almost every district is facing. You know, Bellevue's gonna be closing schools, Shoreline's going through this, I mean, there are lots of places that are all facing the similar issues, so that the helpful side of that is, you know, we don't have to speak with like a unique voice. This is very akin to like two thousand nine during that economic downturn where all districts were really doing that. It's not, um, just because of the way in which we do things, it's kind of the way things were kind of switched on us for both revenues, um, and all that to say, yeah, we do have to be careful about the way in which we're spending money. Um, and different ways to look at our enrollment, what we're looking at as well, so they'll go, they'll fit together, for sure.
Yeah, in fact, we may have a little extra time because of the.
Yeah, absolutely.
But the trend, yeah.
So, to some degree, what I think I'm hearing is that there's really not a whole lot besides potentially being more disciplined that we can really do.
No, we just missed, you were gone when I said.
Damn it, nevermind, we don't hear that, I'll watch, okay, sorry.
We have, we have some things that we can still help, I think, to help with this. Working with the city, other entities, counting as well, we're gonna need to.
I think we've got a, it, uh, kind of benchmarked for potential future work session, more of just like a, not to come with a plan, but like, let's all get together and like, talk about what that could look like and strategize together to hopefully work at that on the agenda soon.
But we just can't, we just can't rock along with these fund balances at this.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Not acceptable.
Yep. Agreed. Um, okay, enrollment report. I think I don't have much else to say besides.
So is this educational data, the, 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 something that's gonna, are they gonna give us report soon?
Uh, the, they will be working on it, we expect to have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
By late February, which means we can put it together for March.
Okay, so that's gonna basically update our demographic.
It'll, it'll update the long range projection on that and then some other ideas that we have for helping out with that. Yeah.
Okay, monthly budget status report.
Yes, I just did one of it, so, question, how many F T staff are supported by S R dollars, eleven point six, that's, that's a pretty, it's a, it's a lot. Do we anticipate, I know some of those originally were hired knowing that, you know, there's a short term, um, which is, uh, but, yeah. Are there any, are there a significant number of them that are not that, that we really would like, well, I guess, hard to say, we like to keep a lot of them, but.
There's for sure that, I'll just off the top of my head, I won't name position.
Yeah, no.
But I would say about five of, maybe five or six of those F T Es, we need to rework.
How to get it part, ongoing part of the organization.
Absolutely, and I think that goes back to the, there, uh, zero base.
It's gonna be a really broad question, so you can be like, Carly, no thanks. Outside of like, what's in this, you know, kind of in this status report, is there anything related to the specific, you know, items or things related to our financial health that maybe isn't reflected in this report that should be on our radar?
That was fun watching you scroll through.
You should see it when she has a calculator in front of her.
Are we in good financial standing with all of our contracts?
Can you ask that question during? Because when you say that, I can think of a lot of different ways to answer that.
Yeah, you know, because again, thinking of seeing this number, right? That, that just gives me like, do I, do we need to be worried right now about being able to like pay our current contracts and bills and things like?
No, we're fine, we're fine on that level.
Okay.
You're fine on that level. Um, if there was any gap, right? It would, it would be an issue between probably next month and March, based on the eleven dollars that we get.
Okay, any other questions on the? All right, uh, thank you, strategic landing feedback.
No, um, so we have little, we've, uh, gotten a prioritization pieces from the feedback that we had during the fall. So those are the, um, ones that should be highlighted, so they're not really standing out as well. Those are really the bullets under each kind of one of these areas, so in that high expectations. The clear and common student growth goals, like that was one of the high priority places that came out as people were prioritizing. Um, we tried to put that along with what the actual performance measures might be. I think this is, you know, we still need to clean up this information to make it something that's easy, a lot easier to digest and see and put all this. So I think this was meant to be kind of an update to to what we had to show you what we had worked on and then, but, you know.
Can we request next time, can you highlight that sooner?
Yes, I mean.
That, that was the biggest addition.
The performance measures, that one of those.
Yeah, so, uh, I think we, we could dive a little bit more into this later too, but I think what the biggest thing that struck me when looking at this is I went back and I reviewed our minutes from June twenty eighth, where we had a work session on the strategic plan. And there was a list of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, at minimum updates that needed to be made. They weren't all made. And so I guess my confusion is like, what's happened between June and now we are in January, where again, we're paying lots of money for, again, you know, talking about our financial deficit here, and we're spending a lot of money for what? I'm like, and it's a simple thing, like I, like, again, I was looking here at changing the word leverage to incorporate our value. Right, so instead of tokenizing and leveraging people, we're incorporating and, you know, bringing them in. That wasn't changed, even looking at the, the order in which these things are written. There was an ask that relationships be first, because relationships are foundational, not high expectations. So even with the order, so it's like, the bear, it's like, it almost makes you wonder like, why are we even having a conversation again, to make more notes in the minutes? For it, for us to get mostly the same report, thank you for the performance indicators, that beautiful.
Is this, is this still John Steeves with students or is this intern?
We're working both internally and with them. So, I mean, most of the work that we did over the winter in talking with community and staff and students, um, that's work that we did internally and getting that information.
But we're still under contract, I think, or we're paying extra?
No, he's still under that same individual contract. So I'll go back and review those, at minimum, those ten items, make sure that we have all those cleaned out, so that it.
I, I think that's less the point.
Right.
But yeah, okay.
I get that. Yeah.
June twenty eighth, yeah, would you like a copy of the minutes that are here?
I think it's it, and again, I mean, these are things that, I think, as we're looking at, uh, kind of especially like a spherical thing, that those things will rotate to priorities at different times, as they're talking about wherever they are, so. And again, I think we did talk about this before, that we didn't want to necessarily have something in a hierarchical or linear fashion. So it is, how do you kind of present that in a way that doesn't? So I think that's something that we're because we, I, you know, but I, I think a lot of feedback we had from both you and from the various groups are, all of these areas are really important. So we're also trying to have it put together in a way that people can kind of remember that and, you know, acronyms sometimes help, as you put that in there.
Yeah, I think the circular representation, you know, says there is no that particular hierarchy to it, they're all important.
But then I remember the feedback that some people have to see it linearly, because that kind of visual piece is something they have a little bit harder time tracking.
I was kind of curious about the the community meetings that, that show up here, because I didn't, so, you know, we feedback, so there was about special education or equity work, and there's a lot of people there, did we not get anything other than?
That, most of that for, for, they did prioritize the areas, um, which kind of aligned with what a lot of the other groups prioritized as well. And then for specific, like, uh, open ended feedback, that was for the most part, there was other comments, uh, that appeared from other groups as well, especially around like, um, making sure we're welcoming newcomers, um, recent immigrants to the country, which I think fits with a lot of our M L L strategies and what we're looking at. Wanting to deal with people who have a language barrier, so I think there's recognition about those, those were the two main takeaways from those groups. From that, for.
So welcoming newcomers and what?
Making sure that we are including special education students when we're talking about equity. So I think just having that be, um, elevating that to the same level as when we talk about race and equity, that we're including that when we're talking about equity.
And there was no different, I mean, that was, that group is already told, uh, split out by different.
Languages.
Language groups, and so there wasn't any perceptible differences between the different language groups.
Not for the prioritization, um, those were all, again, pretty much aligned. I think it was just in the open ended quotes that they had about what we should do to be known for, which diversity came up a lot for what, what was she being for?
I guess for high expectation, are we thinking about, at the end of the day, the goals to increase academic rigor, so that we can
That's certainly part of it, is to make sure that we have, kind of have that expectation. I think that other part around high expectations, if we were to talk to sometimes the, uh, parents or students is just the, when they have a conversation with someone about not being stereotyped into a limit, um, or starting at a particular area based on assumptions that some might have, either based on your language or what you look like or where you're coming from. So I think some of that is the high expectations as well about, yeah, all of our students really have amazing opportunities to grow, and I think that's also why we're trying to focus on a lot of the growth data that we see too, so that we're showing, not only do we want students to be able to have um, good rigor and be prepared for whatever comes after high school, but for some students, they may just take a little bit longer. Um, but we wanna make sure we're putting the supports in place that we can recognize them.
All of the words here are what has been agreed upon, correct? Relationships engagement is high expectation.
I would say yes. Just so that we know which way. Yeah. And so, I mean, I'll be super honest with you about that. So I say yes with hesitance because I mean, the, the, the work that has been done thus far has got us here. So to some degree, I have to trust and believe that this is not me approving this saying this is okay, but this is a result of community. I do have concern about the way in which the community input was gathered, but that's a whole other, whole other thing. I think generally speaking too, and this was a sentiment that was shared a while ago and where the ultimately the concern stems from is the personal bias or the personal lens with which was being brought for this work by someone that's not even a part of our district. And so there was, there's been an increasing level of concern around that for me. And so to say, I mean, I agree with you because I like these sentiments. That's great. But can I say with full confidence that this is representative of what our community actually wants for their district? I'm not really sure because I don't trust the process through which they got that information. Is that helpful at all? Okay, like I wish honestly that we could like really start over and do it in a more authentic way. But I don't know that that's feasible financially or from a time place either. So that's just personally where I'm struggling with this process. I'm sorry, that's probably not the answer you wanted to hear.
It is some very own response.
And I'm super happy to talk more about that anytime.
I think one of the things I was reading this over thinking about kind of the race and equity perspective and nowhere in this document did they use the term anti racist, which I mean, it kind of referred to nurturing and racial equity, but I think I think a stronger word is kind of needed just to, because particularly listening to, you know, the cluster, Mr. Blanton, talking about, you know, I think a little kind of bigger shell in that direction would be helpful. So I think having that word, those words, whether it's in, I don't know. Somewhere. Yeah, probably. Yeah.
I agree that it needs to be in there. I will also say that we better not put it in there if we're not willing to do it. Right? If we're not willing to become an anti racist organization, I'm not putting it on there, the superficial word that we say we're trying to do. So just to say like, that's going to require probably a lot more from the board, from all of us, if that's really who we want to be. And I'm in, I'm here for it. I just want to be mindful of that. I don't want to just put superficial word document. Please. Like if we're ready for that commitment. Yeah. I mean, said me and her first. I think that was a like a question. Are we ready? Well, like, is that something we'd be ready for?
And I, I would like to say yes. But I guess my next question would be, what do we as individuals and a group need to do to make it work? And that would be my question before I can commit to it. What exactly does that mean? In reality for us to do, which I think we're all willing to do. We just need to know have some guidance and what it would take to do that.
But that's what the training.
Yeah.
And there's never going to be a clear cut answer, unfortunately. I know. Trust me.
The step that we would need to take. I feel like we're doing that. And we have to be committed to it, not just being completely when we show up important, but we have to walk it every day. And we have to be willing to learn when we're not. So we have to be willing to help each other learn when we want.
So how can we state that in not such a concrete way? That we're going to be an anti racist, but how that we're going to continue to grow? And
it might include maybe that we may stumble.
Yeah, I think as I talked about in the training, it's a journey and it doesn't start today and then next Tuesday or something. It's just ongoing.
And they actually are interested in having further conversations with the board, our trainers. So.
In our statement of being anti racist, could we say we continue the journey, continue? And can we state it in such a manner that we recognize?
Journey and leadership.
As we think about this. Maybe as a verb, someone during our journey.
I know, I know I shared this with you. I was really appreciative of the I think it was a vision statement, but it was shared at the beginning of that training and I, it sounded like that was kind of, we were working up towards like that becoming a vision of the district. And so I think based on too, kind of the timeline of how the strategic plan has, has continued to roll. It feels like there's some spaciousness that we can continue to have some discussion with. So I think we can then feel good of it. I feel good about that what we're putting on there is true. So maybe let's kind of pencil that in. But again, I want to really make sure that there's a also a commitment by all of us about what that are. Yeah. So kind of ongoing conversation, I guess, but definitely want to circle back after some community connection. But I'm really glad you brought that up, Director Larson, because that was actually something that I was thinking about too. Being absent here. Anything else on this one? Okay, so that brings us to the policy three, one, one, seven is our second review. This is the students in or released from an institutional educational facility. The additional questions on this. Okay, great. Then we will move on to some action items. So the first action item is approval of the purchase of interactive channels. Get a motion. Questions, comments?
I just want to compliment Mr. Baker and the team for getting this one, this one. And also to some degree of community, I mean, I think, so this was a state brand for digital and I think a lot of districts probably had to use this for one to one and but our community committed to funding that a long time ago. So we get to use this for enhancing the teaching environment. So anyway, good, good. Work by our community and good work by the folks that put the separation together. So it's gonna be good. So a lot of money. Yeah, yeah, for sure.
So I'm all in favor of approving? It's approved. The second action item is approval of the out of state travel for the course America Conference in San Francisco. Questions, comments?
Is this one? Or is this one getting funded? Yeah, this, so these are the kind of ones that, you know, I understand they're in the budget, but now we're in a different financial position where, you know, approving things that are coming out of local level or B A dollars. I got a question whether that's where we can do this kind of stuff very much more because the budget is clearly, you know, not adequate. I mean, to, you know, have our fund balance where we need, where it needs to be. So can we continue to?
There was something that wasn't already a potential allocation.
Yeah, I understand it was. So this one was budgeted. However, the problem is our budget is basically blown at this point. And so do we continue to approve things that we really can't afford? This is for going to.
I will say that if we think about our board budget priorities, this does fit within the arts, right? That we say that we want to prioritize and you know, as a former music educator, like it's, these things are really important types of experiences to be involved in. So I just wanted to like name that too. I, I also agree that like should we be spending money on these types of things? But if we think about our board priorities and again, like we talk the talk about not cutting arts funding, but here we have an opportunity to say, ah, we're going to send them or not send them. So for me, it feels like the conversation about how we adjust spending really should be happening separate from when we have something in front of us like this.
Oh, yeah.
Right? So that then.
Setting the expectation.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is what we will be doing.
Well, and his interest is to generate recruitment and fundraising. I just, so he's, he has an intent, a purpose or goal in.
Well, I think when you have a district that only has one world director encouraging them to go connect with the world director. And he's really trying to go to.
Oh, there's no question. It's a great thing to do. And I completely agree. But if we're going to have, you know, a more serious budget discussion, then fine.
Okay, so I'm favor approval. Okay, so this is the last one of cool contracts for executive coaching. And I'll say it again, because I've said it every time we recruit an executive coaching contract. This is another example where I feel like we have opportunity to spend differently, more efficiently, perhaps efficient is not the right word. Take it back. Just better, I think, a better use of our dollars to support the development of principals and executives still, right? Use it with the same intent, just a different way of spending. I think another thing that I just want to be really mindful of is the work that's already started. So the work's already started and now we're being asked to approve this budgetary cost. That seems the opposite to me. So just want to name those things again, not that I am not going to, because I believe in professional development in this way. I just, I shouldn't have had to say that again in this third coaching contract that we're now approving. So.
So this one's coming out of S R dollars. So.
But there are so many, there are also, it's a process. It's also like we're doing, we did this listening sessions with folks about how we're spending our S R dollars. Did they say we want coaches for our principals? Probably not, right? They probably, it was more directly related to their student, not that coaching for the principal can't have a direct relation with the student. Absolutely will if, you know, absolutely can. But that's, that's different. So that also feels a little bit like, is that really where S R dollars should be going when there are probably other things that have a more, a more direct impact on students.
Well, I, yeah, the thing with S R dollars is the concern is that we won't be able to spend it all in the next year. And so this, I mean, I think this is a worthy thing. I mean, is it the, is it the top of the list, Barry? Probably not, but you know, I mean, I've got a lot of things.
Issue though is it's the process. We're not, we're not being proactive. We're reacting to requests for money or funding. And that, that's bothersome.
You know, because at the end of the day, we are responsible for the fiscal success of this district. And if we don't even have the ability to intervene, like that really stinks. Yeah.
So what, so what are you asking? You're asking for a complete list of all S R funding. I'm not clear on what you're asking.
I'm not asking for anything specifically in this moment beyond like the process being a little bit, yeah.
And we get, and we get that. I mean, I, yes.
And I think with that process, if that process were happening in the right way, then these questions about well, is this really the best use of our money then could happen much sooner? That, that's more of what it is. Yeah. Okay. So all in favor, did it, do we second motion? Do we want to? No, we didn't. Sorry. I just went right in. Okay, we had a motion and a all right, it stands approved. All right. So with that, that moves us along to our final opportunity for public comment. If you are here listening virtually and you'd like to have a public comment, you can do so by raising your hand or having your name in the chat. Just a second, if there's anyone interested in hearing that. Okay. So we are going to take about five minute, can we do it in five minutes? Enough time to put the, we did a five minute recess and actually make it six. So come back at eight forty five for the executive session. So I would ask everyone at this point to kindly make your way out. We'll take just a few minutes to transition into that.
You love people.
Thanks for coming down.
All right. So it is eight forty seven. We're going to step into executive session. I'm just going to say for about twenty minutes. So returning back at nine oh seven and then we'll check back after that. Oh yeah, this is an executive session to review the performance of a public employee per R C W four, two, dot, three, zero, dot, one, one, zero, G. All right, it is nine, ten. We are going to extend our executive session until nine thirty. That's an additional twenty minutes. Thank you. All right, it is nine thirty three. Very sorry that we were three minutes late getting back from our executive session.
All right, it is nine thirty three. Very sorry that we were three minutes late getting back from our executive session, um, but we have returned. Um, and we have one, uh, item, uh, still on the agenda. Oh, I didn't say it is nine thirty four. We came back at nine thirty three. Um, there's one item on the agenda, which is an action item to extend the superintendent's contract. Um, I'm actually going to move that we table this motion until June of this year. Um, that will give us the time to, um, see this annual review full, like fully. So from when we did the annual review last year. Um, and then, um, also continue to, uh, make sure that we're in alignment with, um, strategic plan. Um, and some other big things that we're in the process of. I think we do have to vote on a table, um. So I'm moving that we table it. So I think I need a second. Okay, um, any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Right? Okay, um, so now we will move to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Hi.